Let's see, we have all of our, one, two, three, four. Oh, so yeah, none of the alternates can come and be voting members, but we do have three alternates in the audience this evening. Do you all feel like you can participate in the conversation from where you are? Please participate like you normally would. We don't have any votes on the agenda, but please participate in the conversation as if you were sitting not further away. All right, so we'll do a quick roll call. John?
Aye.
Phil?
Yep.
Mary Ann?
Here.
Mike Ahern?
Here.
Carl?
Present.
Mark?
Here.
And now our alternates. Mike Bouchard?
Yeah.
Steve?
Here.
Susan?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Next up, a review of our minutes from our July 15 meeting. Anyone have any corrections? I have one correction. I'll just start with mine. I think in the review of minutes from the last meeting, I think some we actually did say to accept the minutes, but really we should say approve, and that's basically what it means, even though this might be a direct quote. But will folks agree that to make sure we're capturing the gist of the conversation, that this is to approve the minutes of the June 17 meeting? Any other corrections?
I'm not in the roll call.
Sorry, John. And you are referenced later in the minutes, so if our memories can't attest to that, then... Anyone else? Is there maybe a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I will move that we approve the minutes as amended.
A little second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Interesting.
No one opposed? Any public comments not related to any business that's already on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. Any communications received, June?
No.
Reason through this. Reports of committees. I know we've got anything news from the Select Board?
No, I left my notes in the car. I knew we were going to be talking about PSC next week regarding mask ordinances and mask vaccinations.
So do we still have the Conservation Commission member here?
Yes. Mike, any updates from the Conservation Commission?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Updates from any other? All right. New business. We have a presentation about the agricultural zone.
So I will just kind of do a brief synopsis of what initiated the petition that was started a few months ago. When the planning board was discussing making changes to the ag zone, and we had, I think, four people show up for the initial hearing, and we voiced our concerns about the changes to the ag zone. And they opt, the planning board voted to have a second hearing rather than table it. And so I think 27, maybe I'm wrong, I think 27 people showed up for the next Zoom meeting from representatives of people that owned on the, in the ag zone, voicing their displeasure with making changes to the ag zone. And at that second hearing, the planning board came to realize it, to me, it seemed that they were going to stop discussing the ag zones, stop talking about making changes to it, and wait for two or three people, and I think myself, and I believe my cousin Henry offered to show up for the next meeting, where we would make any, have any discussions about changes to the ag zone. And the planning board showed that they were willing to wait to make any more discussion about the ag zone until that time. So during that time, I asked to be put onto the planning board, to the Select Board. The Select Board did put me on, but there was a meeting in between where I wasn't quite on the planning board, but I did, was invited to Zoom in on that very next planning board, which I did. And to my dismay, much of the meeting was centered around changes to the ag zone. And if you didn't see it, my jaw was open, because I was in disbelief that there was, again, talk about changes to the ag zone. Not only that, but research materials were in everybody's email about ag zone in other communities, I believe Meredith and two, one or two other communities, what they were doing with the ag zone. And a couple of members of the planning board referred to Route 3 and Route 3A as, I don't know, something districts, whatever they, whatever that term was. Welcoming districts, what?
Gateway.
Gateway districts. And they were referring to our roads as that. And I go, this does not sound like the same planning board that just last meeting, two weeks ago, was saying they were going to stop the talk until representatives of the ag zone showed up. So when we saw that, it became pretty clear to me that it was not going to be, it was going to take more to get the attention of the planning board. And we didn't want to do this. I certainly didn't. So we wrote, we put together the next day, started writing a petition, and we had no clue it was going to come to this. We were hoping it would. And so we wrote the petition, spent many hours diligently, and then sent it out. And we expected, boy, if we could get what we got 15 years ago with 7,000 some odd acres represented, and however many, 125 people, that would be great. And I'm going to let Kevin talk about the response, but it was incredible. The outpouring of support, the phone calls that I received on a regular basis, on a daily basis, Dean Yeton received, who was the other person on the petition, and the phone calls that he got. I get a call from one woman who said that she wasn't able to show up on a Zoom meeting. And so, and we were in between planners at the time, so I gave her the chairman's phone number and, or email. And I don't know whether you have a Plymouth email for the town, but anyway, it was very hard for people to contact anybody on the board. And she felt very at odds that she had no voice. So we saw that with a lot of people. No one knew about this was even happening. And it, and I've made this comment before, it's remark, it kind of reminds me of what happened 15 years ago with this company that was fairly new. They were out of Vermont. They were planners, quote unquote, and they were going to fix Plymouth. They took, I don't know, I think it was 20 some odd thousand dollars from the town as payment for their work. And the work couldn't be used, or very little of it, and we never heard from them again. And I, from my understanding is, they stopped their company and their principles went their own way. So it kind of reminded me of that, and it, to do the changes that were proposed during COVID, probably there was a better way. Not only that, but also, I would have thought that there would have been talk with representatives from the committee 15 years ago, but maybe there wasn't any type of remembrance from that from 15 years ago. I obviously remembered it, but I wasn't on the planning board. I don't know whether anybody else did remember that, but it was, it was quite a journey, what went on 15 years ago. And, and so I'm hoping that with the petition that you will learn about from Kevin shortly, that something like that won't get repeated. And if it does, that they will come to the Plymouth Agricultural Zone Committee and talk to us, the way that the planning board back then agreed to not make any changes without conferring with the Plymouth Ag Zone. So somehow the ball got dropped, and it's, it's because boards change, the representatives that service, that served the town to advise us changed. And so I'm hoping that I think we can come to a solution with this board, so that something like that doesn't get forgotten in the future. And I think maybe there's some ideas at the end that we could discuss to go forward. So if the board is fine, if she would like to call Kevin French to talk about the petition?
Steve, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. Should I go over the microphone?
Yeah, that'd be better. Thank you.
As a member of the board that Mike was just talking about, and a lot of the people sitting here tonight were part of that board, some of what you said is not true. And I, for one, am glad that we didn't push it forward. I'm, for one, am glad you guys are all here to work on it. I think we could come up with something much better that works for everybody. But the second hearing you referred to had already been scheduled, I believe. We had already announced it. Legal notices had gone out, and we felt it was only going to be fair to residents to give them the chance for those 27 or however many people you said came out to hear from them. So we did that. At that meeting, if you look at the recording, and if you look at the minutes, I believe what you'll see is the board decided to pull back on any going forward to town meeting, with the understanding that townspeople were interested, didn't like what had been proposed, and wanted to work on it together. So that spirit of collaboration was how it ended for me. This meeting in between, where you feel like something was done that was disingenuous, I don't have the same recollection. I'm not challenging your recollection of that, your jaw-dropping meeting. But I think what we've been trying to do since March is get together, spend the time to do exactly what you and Kevin are starting tonight. And I just don't want people who are watching at home to think we're not going to stand up as a planning board for the truth of what actually happened. That's it.
I'd like to rebuttal that.
Let's keep moving this long. I don't, I don't think that it's in the, if, I don't want to silence your voice, and I'm sorry, making it sound like I'm trying to silence you. If you can keep it to like 35 seconds?
Sure.
Or a minute, that'd be great.
So in that meeting, that I was not a board member, but I showed up for, I'm not sure whether everybody thought that I would be there, there was discussion about coming up with a definition and describing the ag zone. There was one person who said, I think we can get this in without even having to go to a town vote. There was a lot of discussion, and it was pretty jaw-dropping, especially after the prior meeting where they said there would be no discussion. So anyway, I hope that's under 30 seconds.
Thanks, Mike. We're going to hold off on comments from the public for a moment here. But we did have a representative of the committee. Kevin, were you going to present something?
Show the plan.
Your clips are still up there.
Okay. I know they have.
The board has a small. And I will share my screen where I have it up, so it can show up on there and people, well, nobody's at home, so.
And... This is a, we compiled the results of the petition that went out. And as Mike mentioned, the response was quite overwhelming, actually. I've been involved in several of these things in the past, here in other towns and things like that. And I can honestly say, I've never had one that was this, this much of a mandate when it, when it came back in. We got, this is, there's almost 300 responses here that we got. And as you can see, we got almost 10,000 acres in terms of people that responded. And, you know, I always, my theory is, it doesn't matter how we get, got here, it's kind of, what are we going to do now? And the responses that we get, that I got from this, that we compiled, were pretty overwhelming, that the people that owned the property were not in favor of any or many changes to the ag zone, and they, they were pretty happy with the way it was operating as is. The interesting thing to me was the number of responses that I got from people, because a lot of the, some of the original articles that were suggested were lot size requirements and things of that nature. And a lot of the people that responded would not, had small lots, it would have not even been affected by the changes. But their feeling was, they didn't want to see it changed to the areas that were affected. So it wasn't just affecting their land, it was affecting the land around them. And I got, because we, you know, we, we sent them out to everybody that was there. We got people that lived in condominiums and things like that, that didn't have any land, that they lived there, or just under the unit, and, which wasn't really affected by the changes. But even they were in opposition to any changes in the ag zone. And I thought that, you know, it was, it was a pretty clear message to, that they were, they were happy with the way it worked, they were happy with the flexibility of it. They certainly, a lot of the responses that I got, anyway, certainly were looking for more communication. I don't, you know, that's, I'm not saying that's anybody's fault, just going forward, it's something to be very cognizant of. Because there's a lot of people, you know, there's a lot of people out there that take their land stewardship very seriously, and, and to a great extent, they're very good at it. In fact, most of them, in fact, I would say all, but I can't, there may be an exception, but most of them are far better stewards of their property than any government agencies that look after them. No, nothing personal, don't mean anything by that, but they're, they're doing a good job on their own property. And they pay a lot of money for that. You know, they pay a lot of taxes, they, you know, their voices really, they're the voices that have to be heard. It is, you know, you guys are really their representative to speak their voice. And in this case, their voice was pretty clear that they, they don't, they didn't seem to want many changes to the ag zone, if there are any, if there, as I always say, doesn't matter to me, I live in Romney. But if they, if you are going to make any, you know, my only advice would be, you make sure that they're all on board. So, and again, I, you know, I can share, you know, I mean, the map, when, what we did is, it came up to over 65%, and I didn't even deduct the roads and things like that out of it. So it's probably closer to 70%. But again, it was the, it was the biggest mandate of any petition article that I've been on either side of since I've been doing it, and I've been doing it too long. So, if anybody has any questions regarding that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Quick question. So you mentioned 65% of the land mass in the ag zone.
Yeah, yeah.
So you said you had 300 responses. How many, how many petitions did you send?
I think we sent, I'm not sure how many we sent. It was probably 800.
800.
Because we sent, we did everybody. If you lived in a condo at Tenny Mountain, you got a petition, which was significant number of actually non, you know, condo owners, but not real large landowners.
Yeah, the one thing I noticed, just looking at the map, is that a lot of the, and I think this is maybe part of the problem, right? You have some very large landowners, which deserve their voice, obviously. But it seems like in these ag zones, there's, there's becoming more and more of these small developments where there's about 10 houses. And when I look at that map, and I look at those small developments, a lot of those smaller developments tended not to, not to respond or to sign the petition. It was just something that jumped out to me. So maybe there is an opportunity moving forward to, on those small developments that are probably two acre lots, or three acre lots currently, maybe there's an opportunity in those smaller developments to have different zoning than out here where you, I mean, I'm not sure how big this one lot is down here in the south, the south corner there, but it's huge. So it's very, they probably have a very different perspective than the person that lives in a 10-home development on a two-acre lot. But anyways.
And I wouldn't dispute that. I do think some of the people that lived in the smaller lots may not have responded just because it, the change wouldn't have affected them anyway. So they were already at that lot size, or, or, and some of them, you know, may not. But we, I did get one response that said, out of the 200 and 300 that I got, I got one response that said it was, they were in favor of it. So, although they didn't sign it. But, yeah.
Can you tell me how many landowners are represented by the parcels identified in red? How many responses are represented there?
How many? Yeah, that's about 300, 288, I think.
So there...
And some of them, multiple, multiple, own multiple lots.
That was my question. I, I would understand that. I would assume that several landowners own a fairly large proportion of those parcels.
Some of them, yeah, some of them have large tracts, yeah.
Carl?
It's obvious that a large amount of the land in Plymouth is in the ag zone, owned by approximately 300 or so people. What percentage of Plymouth's population is that 300 people? This whole project is to put together something that works best for Plymouth, not what works best for a few owners in the ag zone.
Well, that may be true, but those are the people that own the land that you're affecting.
And there's a whole lot of people that are also going to get affected by whatever is decided about redefining the ag zone.
That's correct, yeah.
John?
I'm kind of curious, in how you asked for a response, you had a petition. Did you ask people to, like, do you want to support this petition? Or did you ask, do you have a voice here you want to, that you want to have heard about changes to the ag zone? I mean, because one selects certain people to respond if you're supporting this, and other people, if they're not supporting this, will not respond. And the other says, everybody, please respond, regardless of whether you support this.
Well, the petition that was put together with, by the ag zone, which I can give you a copy of, was to support their petition. It was to support their petition, which was to, you know, basically limit any changes to the ag zone.
Since this was, you're obviously referring to a mailer petition, I had heard of it, but I haven't seen an example of it. Can you provide an example of the questions that were asked?
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Can you provide an example of the questions that were asked in the, in the information that was sent out?
Well, if you...
Just because many of us never saw it.
Okay. Do you want, would you, I have the petition, would you like me to read it?
I would love to. I would love to hear it.
We, the residents of the Plymouth Agricultural Zone, Ag Zone in Plymouth, New Hampshire, are voicing our concerns with the planning board's efforts to make changes to the zone. We would like to articulate the following items. One, we are troubled by the planning board's continued efforts to redesign or make changes to the ag zone. Two, we are concerned that the passive nature of announcing proposed zoning ordinance changes to the public is negatively impacting residents' abilities to know about or make informed decisions about the proposed changes. Three, changes to the ag zone, changes to the zoning during a pandemic that has limited the means of getting news out and has limited the public's ability to participate in meetings, does not seem in keeping with the principle of an informed public than can participate in its own governance. Not everyone is comfortable with participating in virtual meetings, or even has the necessary equipment to do so. Excuse me. Four, we are concerned about the planning board's apparent lack of understanding about the ag zone and its history, and more specifically, about what defines the sensitive zone overlay zone along Tenny Mountain Highway. Five, it remains unclear what problems the planning board is trying to solve. Six, we are concerned that the arbitrary changes, if implemented, will negatively impact current and future residents in the zone. Specifically, we are concerned that the changes will decrease the value of existing homes, could result in higher property taxes townwide, will price young families out of the market in the zone, will prevent homeowners from expanding a home, or from dividing a lot to provide a home for a family member, will create non-compliant properties throughout the zone, and will result in a loss of our precious agricultural and forest lands as they get chopped into unnecessarily oversized house lots, thereby reducing the open space farmers and landowners provide. We, the undersigned, are petitioning the planning board to stop all attempts to change the name, the requirements, permitted uses, boundaries, or add definitions of or to the ag zone. We, the undersigned, also lend our support to the Plymouth Agricultural Zone Committee, established in 2006, to voice collective concerns for those who live or own property in the ag zone.
Thank you.
Mike?
One thing that I didn't point out is that the folks that signed that, they were just the ones that returned it. We don't know, we didn't have, I'm not even sure if the old ones came back to you, the ones that were undeliverable?
They did. In fact, I had a new appreciation for the tax collector in town, because I got a lot of them back that were undeliverable. So, surprise me, but...
And it wasn't like we went on a door-to-door mission.
Not that I didn't appreciate the tax collector in first place, don't get me wrong. Okay, sorry.
It was not a door-to-door mission to go get everybody signed up. It was just whoever responded. The interesting thing was the names that were, that came back. It was across, there was no, oh, it's this group of people. It was across any lines that you could imagine. There were across every party line. It was across every, you can't put these people into one group versus another. It was, it was surprising to see all the names, and the diversity of the names in our community, as diverse as the community is. And I was pretty proud to be a Plymouth resident, to see, as Kevin would give me updates every once in a while, or Dean would call with an update. It was, it was a pretty proud moment to see that a small town can, can get together in that fashion. But I will let...
I'm, I'm really, like, impressed that all these people came out and expressed this. I'm still also curious for the people who didn't return it. Did they not return it because they did not want to get involved? Did they not return it because, I mean, you don't know the answer to this, I don't think, but did they not return it because they actually disagree? Or, I mean, that would be, I don't think you have the answer to that, but that would be a really interesting thing to know. Like, those who didn't respond, why? I mean, did they actually not support the petition? Or did they just didn't care? Or, it would be a curious thing to find out somehow.
It occurs to me that this seems to be an attempt to stuff the entire changing anything about the ag zone into a box and putting it on a shelf. Just don't touch it at all. That's not the point of what we were trying to do. We're trying to discuss what was going to work best for the people in the ag zone and work best for the rest of Plymouth. Putting it in a box and hiding it isn't a solution at all. That's not going to accomplish anything.
Well, I guess one of the...
Hang on a second. Steve, you had, you had your hand up.
No, you can respond. I think, and I'm not, I'm just reiterating the responses that I got. And that people that I talked to, that sent things in and called and things like that, were, basically were comfortable with the way the ag zone was now, and they weren't comfortable with the proposed changes. I guess that would be the simplest way I could put it. And the, you know, a lot of, a question, a question that I got a lot was, well, what was the problem? You know, that's what we say. What, what problem are you trying to solve? And I didn't know. I didn't, I said, that's not, I can't tell you that. That's a planning board.
You do understand what the name of this board is, though, right? It's a planning board, it's not a reactive board. You can't plan... board. It's not a reactive board. You can't plan in hindsight. What we're trying to do is create a structure and a vision for this town to move forward and not what's been done in the past. This is the planning process. This is what we're discussing. I think it's important to have this discussion, and, and if I can comment, the second, third, and fourth issues that you brought up in the, in the questionnaire all seemed to be related to, you know, the format of the meetings we're having over the past year, the lack of access should be less of an issue if we choose to move forward with this. You know, I do understand there's going to be a portion of the population that may object to, you know, any changes to zoning, but, you know, honestly, I think it's our responsibility as a board to kind of take the pulse of the town, of all the residents of the town, try to understand what is going to serve everyone's best needs best, and put that forward in the only poll that matters, which is a vote. So, you know, a poll of select members of the town, you know, I would take issue with the language that you used particularly, but honestly, if we can put together language and changes and get some information out to people and let the voters decide, I would say that would be a fair way to conduct a poll of all the residents.
I don't think anybody was opposed to, I think one of the things that I got back was that they weren't informed. And that, that was, then that was a problem. So, I just, I'm not, like I said, I'm not, it doesn't matter how we got here, it's matters what we've done with it now. So.
I saw John and then Steve, and I will give members of the whole, like, a chance to speak, but I'm trying to keep this as a board conversation for the time being. So.
If I can just add to what Phil said, sometimes as real estate markets and other things change, if you want to preserve the character of a particular area, sometimes you need to change the zoning in order for that character to actually be preserved. So sometimes, you know, the market changes and the current guidelines you have in place are not going to be effective in change, in countering some of the things we see looking forward.
Sure. Thank you, Kevin. I guess this has been like six months since we decided not to go forward, and the fact that there are people still showing up to be engaged in this conversation, I appreciate what you guys have done to get people engaged. What I don't want to do is lose the opportunity to have these conversations that you're all saying. So, if we could figure out a way together tonight to start moving this forward and just answering questions, asking each other questions, you know, about how can we best help landowners? What should we stay away from talking about? And just as a planning board, start to figure out, is there anything that should be done? Maybe there's not. Maybe there's no interest in doing something. Maybe there are some creative ideas that are non-regulatory, I don't know. But to have people keep coming to meetings to just talk about what happened in February doesn't seem like we're going to keep them engaged. So, we talked about having these work sessions be that time, and I'm hoping tonight is the beginning of those conversations about this and other zones.
So, you can't see me here. For those that don't know me, I'm June Hammond Rowan, the Planning and Development Director, and I started in January. And so this was well underway at that time. And one thing I just want to speak up and I, you know, you start, you kind of jump in, try to figure out what's going on. I knew this was happening. We had some staff here helping to put this together. But one thing that I quickly was, you know, I knew town meeting was coming up. We had deadlines if we were going to move ahead on these things. And I spent a fair amount of time taking conceptually what the planning board had been talking about and said, well, what's the amendment? Going into the zoning ordinance, because we have to present this at town meeting as, you know, this line will be changed in this way, basically using the word document of track changes to kind of see how these things fit in. And when I, that hadn't been done, and immediately when that started to happen, that's where I started to say, as a professional planner, that this was not ready, in my opinion, and I conveyed that to the board. I, no offense to the work that had been done, but it, it did create big changes that needed to be viewed really not just as an idea, but in the context of just where they fit in in a real, direct way. And I think the board started to see that at that point, and, you know, heard from everybody on some Zoom meeting back whatever month, February maybe, or January, which was great to have the participation. So it's always a process, but I do think that for whatever reasons, the town didn't have the capacity to pull it, you know, to really put this whole thing together in a meaningful way, to get the public input, input, and to have the public be able to really see exactly what was being suggested. So, I just, I think, you know, Steve, you just said something important. The past is the past, and, you know, let's try to move ahead in a way that's important. I do recognize that, yes, the board, I think, you know, stopped working on it, said they weren't going to go ahead to any changes at town meeting. There were no changes presented this past year. We did have another discussion, and yes, there was a handout. That's my fault, Mike. Blame it on me. I put it forward with some ideas about the ag zone and tried to give it a purpose or definition. And when building those things, you often look to other communities to see what they say. So that's where we started pulling that together, just some samples. It didn't mean we were going to adopt any of it, and certainly we could, this board couldn't, has to go to town meeting. But I can tell you that every zone needs to have a purpose statement. That's, you know, some case law has said that in the absence of that, if something ends up in court, it's hard for decisions to be made to understand what the purpose of the single-family zone is, or an agricultural zone, or an industrial commercial zone. Every zone should have a clear statement of purpose that then sort of spells out, and then these are the permitted uses, this is what's not permitted. So, we need that for every zone. I made the mistake of just showing it for one zone, but we need that for all zones. So any purpose statements or definitions aren't going to be presented just for one zone. They need to be for all. So, you know, it's a lot of work to do this. I do know that probably 15 years ago, the town had money in the capital improvement plan for hiring somebody, a consultant, to really give the time to rewrite the zoning ordinance. I have no idea what ever happened, but that project never went, just the money disappeared. There was a fair amount of money in it at one point. So, but we've got to find a way over the next few years, I think, to make this ordinance work better. Originally was adopted in 1961, and it has a lot of Band-Aids put together at this point. So I've been asking and working with the board to try to pull back, to look more at general provisions, some of the administrative aspects of the ordinance that really first need to be cleaned up so we can make it function better, and then we can get into the zones probably over the next couple of years. But I really believe that there's some other areas, and yes, as we make changes to general provisions and administration of it, it's going to affect all the zones. But I hope everybody will be willing to say, oh, these are good changes to make it work better, and support that, and help us get the rest of the town, you know, to, to adopt it, understanding. But, so I think, to say no changes to the agricultural zone, you have to realize there are some general areas where every zone's going to be impacted. So, we'll help try to communicate that better. I mean, obviously, it's been difficult in the last year, year and a half for everybody. So, that's my sort of little summary of it.
We are a board of volunteers that are volunteering our time to make this happen. So, I'm glad everyone is here this evening. It was great to have the feedback we got in January. Honestly, that's what we've been looking to have all along, is getting that kind of feedback. So, I know there's some people here that want to speak. I would like to remind everyone that the zoning ordinances that we presented in January are not on the table. So I, we've been kind of going back to that as a board, so I'd like to just think about moving forward a little bit here. We don't need to debate the merits of the zoning ordinance that was proposed, or the changes that were proposed back in January. And as far, in the communication side of things, we hear, we hear that that is an issue. We all hear that. We'll do our best. But again, we are a board of volunteers that, you know, I think most of us have a lot of other things going on as well. So to be able to communicate beyond the normal channels where we're legally obligated to send things out, we go above and beyond, if anyone caught my public access TV cameo last year. We are trying to get the word out. So we rely on, on folks here tonight and social media as best we can, the newspaper. So that's what we're trying to do, but we do need, we do need help to get the word out. So, that said, are there anyone, is there anyone here that wants to speak about the petition that was circulated, the ag zone, anything like that? We do have to come up to the microphone to speak. Come on up, Frank.
Frank Miller. I'm on the Economic Development Committee, so-called. My last couple of years, I've been doing an inventory of all our businesses, industries within the town of Plymouth. I just finished up the Main Street inventory of our business community in February of 2020. Obviously, any element in our use list for any zone has a compliance requirement. So we have five agencies having the authority, having jurisdiction to determine what you do and how you do it anywhere in the town of Plymouth or anywhere. But it's the federal, code of federal regulations, state RSAs, municipal ordinances, industry standards, and the last one is Mother Nature. So, when you look at what could be accomplished in a area, agricultural zone, village, commercial zone, you have to realize that when an applicant comes to this board, you're going to be looking at how this complies with any laws, rules, regulations, codes, and standards. If people haven't been involved in the process of understanding about all those technical elements, that's why we have the boards. You're supposed to be able to reach out to the people having the authority because of their specialty. So engineers, architects, landscapers, natural scientists, town planners, and lawyers. Those are the people, the professionals, that are trained, licensed, qualified, and experienced in land use issues. The first thing we have to do is inventory what you have, the way you have it, and decide what, based on any of these codes and standards, what changes or what application of a use of land would comply for a particular area. So that is my, been my process. I have maps of Plymouth back in 1900. I have 40 years' worth of research data, plans, and stuff. I was on the planning board, '83, on the master plan committee. Trying to look and see what we can do to acquire new businesses, any direction of effort for businesses, and how do we comply with all that regulatory process. So that would allow us to have a sense of direction of our economic growth. So it's very complex, but I have an office above Chase Street, big maps. I'm trying to get it out, get all of our implementation of our master plan out of print into pictures so people can understand the concept of what we thought we wanted to have happen, and how do we get it from where we thought we want to reality of an actual application of moving forward, which may include adjustments of our zones because of when they were done in 1961, and all of the codes and standards and the use. Now, I'll give you an example. Green Street is agricultural zone. There's not one agricultural industry on Green Street. We do have an agricultural business on Main Street, which by our land use issues, wasn't supposed to occur. But, so we might want to consider readjusting that boundary. But unless you have an inventory of what you have, the way you have it, and how it's being used, to decide what was actually going to comply with all those regulatory processes, you're going to be in continual discussion, as we have for the last 40 years, and not have a sense of direction of effort of how we're going to use our agricultural lands and how we're going to use other zoned areas of our town. So, again, I offer my services of any committee or subcommittee that wants to look at, see what we've already got through the planning board's programs and projects in the last 20 years. And the inventories, I was just starting to get with Tenny Mountain Highway. When this COVID thing hit, I was going to start the process of the Route 325 corridor study that needs to be completed so we can understand what we have, and then what is our five- or 10-year plan of who we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Anyone else? Anything else from the board about the, oh?
Dean, you look like you want to say something. No?
Yep. The only time that I saw all those plans ever, I mean, was in the Laconia Daily Sun. Did you put it anywhere else? I happened to see that. I called Mike about it. Nobody was notified about this just happening.
So we noticed things, or we had been noticing things in the Laconia Daily Sun, I think, because of, and this is not something the board deals with, this is an administrative function that are, we have to, we are legally required to notice our meetings. And they get put in the Laconia Daily Sun, I believe, because of the timing of our meetings. I believe we wrote a press release in the Record Enterprise, a, I know I wrote a letter to the editor. Those are the things that come top of mind. There are notices in, I think, a few different public places that we have to put those things. So we're, we're noticing to the, beyond what we are legally required to do as a board. So.
Well, I just, you know, it's the only place I saw it was in there. I didn't actually see the editor or anything. This map should mean something to you. I realized this gentleman only has said that. There's only 300 people. How does that average out? Well, I have one question for the whole board, nothing derogatory. How many people are natives of the Plymouth, New Hampshire?
I'm two miles short of being the native to Plymouth myself, but that might not count.
Is anybody else a native of Plymouth?
I guess I would say I'm.
No, I'm a part board member.
She's a board member.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You don't count, sir.
I guess not.
Well, Donnie, am I a native or probably not quite?
I don't know. Where were you born? Down in Unity?
All right. Was that, did you have, did you have other, anything to add on top of that?
No, I mean, I just hope that, you know, if this, if you guys think you're going to continue with this, believe me, the ag zone is going to be, it will be fighting. This map should mean something to you. It's just a lot of work. And I think the ag zone is one of the best control zones you have, and we're controlling our own thing. We don't need somebody else to come up with it. Whoresnus, it doesn't work for our own.
Thank you. To be clear, we are not proposing any of those changes. There are no changes on the table now. So those changes have been, we heard you loud and clear, and those changes are not on the table right now. So. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
My name is Donald Jox. I used to be a selectman here. I've been in town pretty much my entire life. But I would like to say that the landowners in this area have done a fabulous job of being good stewards of the land. It's why you people are here. We just figured out how many of you didn't even start here, but you came here because the land was nice and well taken care of, and we know how to be good stewards of our land. And we do not need the government taking our rights away, because someday they're going to show up on your doorstep. Thank you.
All right. Did you have something to add, Mike?
Yes. So, listening to what Steve had said, and we'd had a conversation earlier that he vaguely remembered 15 years ago, or did remember, but I don't think anybody else on the board besides myself knew about the, about what was going on 15 years ago, that the ag zone committee was still intact. And so I would make a motion tonight that the map, the petition, and how many signatories signed the petition be added into the master signed the petition be added into the master plan, so that future boards won't be able to say, or won't, you know, will be always knowing that this was, that this happened. So if it's in the master plan, the board will know about it. Future boards, not us, will remember. But I'm talking five years down the road, seven years, we may not all be here. Maybe none of us will be here. So I make that motion, and I look for a second.
So there's a motion on the table. We could, someone could second it, and we can not approve the motion, but we have to do something, right? Or can we not second it?
They can not second it.
Okay.
I would just add that any changes to the master plan still need a public hearing, and, you know, you don't, would be amended, you know, and so there's not like, just doing this would adopt it right in tonight. I just want you to be clear, Rebecca.
Can I ask a question relative to the motion on the table?
Ask the chair.
Oh, yes.
So, since we are not in the process of writing the master plan, and it's typically done every 10 years, would this involve writing a new master plan? I don't believe we have an amendment process for our master plan, do we?
You can, I mean, it's amending or adopting anything, you can make changes to it. You'd have to follow the same process as adopting the master plan, so you'd basically be amending it, you know, to add that piece in, so, we just as an appendix or something. Appendix, I'll have to go back and see if we have any appendix.
We have a couple of appendices. I'm hesitant to put this into the master plan. I find the language that is used in the survey to be borderline offensive to some planning board, to the work of the planning board. I think the value of the information is important, but I think for something to be added in the master plan, I would like to see the way it's asked. I'd like to see it asked in a more neutral way, where it's not basically condemning the work of the planning board, and then asking people to weigh in on what do you think.
I'd be willing to amend my motion to make it more amendable to what you said.
It's the survey itself, the way the folks were asked.
Yes. I'm willing to, as long as the map shows up, and we use wording to the effect of, and I'm looking for suggestions, but a survey was, a petition was developed to ensure that changes?
I'm uncomfortable with seconding this, or even considering it, because it was not, it was not generated by the planning board. It was not generated as part of a subcommittee of the planning board. It was not, it was not an impartial, it was not an impartial survey.
What if we looked at the minutes of the meeting and considered putting that into, you know, just so there's documentation about this, you know, we'll see the minutes soon, take a section of the minutes, consider that motion at that time of just document, so there's some documentation of this event, that's what you're really asking for coming into the master plan, that there's been concern about the agricultural zone. We can put the map in. Would that work to consider it and kind of put it on the table, and consider it maybe as a different format than just saying what you said?
I would, rather than waiting for minutes to come out, and I think we've got the public here, I think that it would make sense to, in the motion that I'd be willing to propose, and some of the board members can help me to work out, that would be acceptable to you, but that there was, there is considerable interest in the Ag Zone, staying as is, that a petition was sent out to the residents, or to the owners of the Ag Zone, who had strong feelings that the Ag Zone was working well the way that it was. 300, 288 responses came back, and we enter the map. And I think that's pretty neutral. It's the sentiments.
Huh?
Clarify, this is for the minutes, or for the?
To be added in, I'm making a motion that we start the process of adding this into the master plan.
So my issue wasn't with the language of the motion, it's with the language of the petition itself.
We wouldn't add that. We would add just the wording.
Okay, but it's the way it was asked, and the results that came out of that, that the way that the petition was asked. And then, as Steve and Phil mentioned, that it's, this is, to add something to the master plan that didn't come out of this board, or a subcommittee of this board, and the way things were asked in a way that, to me, was not neutral enough to get results that I would like to see in the, in the master plan itself.
The thing is that, in the master plan, you're looking for the sentiments of what the people want to see going forward, and that you don't have a better example than this, what the people are looking for in their community. Nothing like this has existed, I don't think, in the history of our town, that there was that much of a consensus.
Hang on a second, Carl, please let him finish.
I think that's what I was going to say, Mike, because based on Kevin, correct? What Kevin said, and what you've said, and I think a lot of this, you know, is great. You get 65% of the landowners. I think where I would be a little bit concerned is that, based on the numbers that I heard, you sent out 800 petitions, we received 288 back. I'm no math whiz, but that's not 50% of the people of the Ag Zone, right? And I'm not saying that not, maybe there's 50%, if you did the door-to-door, that would have said that they're concerned of this. I just think that putting it in the minutes, we all have agreed, I think, that we want to work through this and come up with a better solution for the Ag Zone, and for all of zoning of Plymouth. So I just, that's where I get concerned, is that, you know, based on the number of respondents, we don't even have information from a majority of the people in the Ag Zone. You know, I would say we had, you know, maybe you're close to 40%, but that means 60% of the people didn't respond. And I think, as Phil was saying earlier, it really, even if you have 1,000 acres, or you have one acre, everyone in the Ag Zone each has one vote, right?
Even if you're a renter in the Ag Zone, but you're a registered voter, you get a vote.
Right. So that's where my concern would be, Mike, and I hear you, and I live in the Ag Zone. So although I didn't grow up here, I do live in the Ag Zone, and I do hear some of the concerns that are being brought forward. But I just think that, based on the number of responses, I think it wouldn't be right yet to put something, make an amendment to the master plan.
How about we start off right now with just a motion that we've had a discussion, and that we ask to find some way to inform future board members of the importance of the name of the Ag Zone, the uses of the Ag Zone, and the sentiments of the Ag Zone owners to not have changes at this time.
A motion to do, to just find a way to do this?
No, just the sentiment of what the residents have been making clear for the past several months, so as a, a notice for future boards, that this, this took place, because there was no, no one even mentioned the Plymouth Agricultural Zone on this board during that whole process. I don't believe anybody mentioned it. We didn't even know what was going on.
Man? I think part of my concern is the 800, as opposed to the whole town, was not asked. So if the master plan represents the whole town, I think they should have been asked, not just a limited finite group.
So I also, I just want to sort of chime in on the idea that most of us weren't here, or none of us were on the board, or many of us didn't live here 15 years ago. I don't necessarily see that as a problem. I see that, you know, the board is, you know, we evolve, we change, as the town changes as well, and I think that's okay. That's how this process works. So the process, and we're legally required to notice in very specific ways, so the information gets out there. I think it would be great, and the agricultural zone is a group of people who own property in the, in the Ag Zone. It's not a subcommittee of the planning board, it's not a town-commissioned board or committee. Get a representative, we've got someone from the Conservation Commission, beyond our Conservation Commission rep on the planning board here tonight, that's here to participate, or to listen and observe, and bring stuff back to that town board. Can, if we have an Ag Zone Committee member on the board right now, we might not always, but could the committee send somebody to our regular meetings, every meeting, so they can be a part of the discussion and keep, keep an eye on things? And then, as stuff comes up, bring it up to the board, so the board has to remember. I think putting some sort of burden onto this board and the administrative functions that support it, that says, we're going to have to make sure that, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, that the people that live in the Ag Zone, or the ones that responded to this petition, don't want to see any changes to the Ag Zone, to me, that just seems like, I'm just not sure how we can actually uphold that.
And I'm not trying to force anybody into a hole, I guess, on this planning board. We're all different. I just, the frustration from 15 years ago, with the board saying, yes, we are listening to the Ag Zone Committee, we're happy to listen to you, and no changes, nothing was proposed for 15 years, and we got the assurance from them that many years ago, that if there were changes, we would discuss it with the Plymouth Ag Zone Committee. And then 15 years later, it was all forgotten, and I was on the board for a few years, I reminded the board, but then I wasn't on the board, and nothing, there was no connection with this new board several months ago.
John?
I want to say, I'm really impressed the way this community has come together. I mean, it may be a partial part of the community, or whatever, as we're talking about, but I'm really impressed the way everyone's come together. And when it came down to it, you guys did show up, and you guys did stop this process, and have us rethink the way it was going. And it may be a little bit messy, it may not have been as early as you wanted it to happen, but the fact is, you came together as a community, you expressed your voice. We all paused, we're rethinking it now, and that's how the process works. And in fact, you're successful in that, and you should be applauded. And I don't think we need to go back and rethink an already-written document, the master plan, to show this. Just continue to stay strong as a community, and represent your voice, and be involved, and, yeah.
Did I say one thing?
Go ahead.
Fifteen years ago, there was a mill pit called Burke Rock, that came in in Vermont, and they were going to scare a big thing, well, you know, all they did was take the town's money, and that's when it went on the ballot. We showed everybody how long the ballot that year, and then finally, they just went away. So this map, I realize there's only 300 people that responded, but I think there's 60,000 acres in the agricultural zone, and Kevin has got, put in there 10,000 on there. If that doesn't mean something to these people, that proving myself owns abstract land, we want to just keep it the way it is.
And I think you'll see that the landowners, and Donnie said this, the landowners that own that land have done an excellent job of taking care of their property. That's what makes Plymouth so special, and it's the generations back, when Plymouth was known as the agricultural community of the area, because of the specialness of the land along the river. And that's what makes us special, and to come out continually over the last 20, 30 years, trying to change the name of the Ag Zone, and we heard it again this time around. And we don't want to have to do this. We don't want to have to do this in another 15 years. We may have to, but we don't, we don't enjoy doing, this is not something we like to spend our time doing. And it would be really nice if, and I think I've heard it from, from most of the planning board members, that, you know, maybe we took some steps that we shouldn't have. I'm hearing that from quite a number of you. And, you know, it's, do we want to tell a landowner that they can only use, instead of the possibility of so many lots per acreage, and they've kept it, you know, unused, to tell someone who owns land in the single-family zone, you can only use two of your three bedrooms in your home? It's taking. And so we want to make sure that we're heard, in the future, not just today.
All right, you've been heard. We've spent an hour, we've accomplished nothing that we haven't accomplished at previous meetings. How many housing units is New Hampshire short right now? 20,000 housing units. Landowners are going to change. I'm not going to own my parcels forever. The town, as Phil said, has to, this board is charged of being forward-thinking. We might change nothing in the end, but we have to think about change that's coming. And over the last 15 years that you keep referring to, a lot of change has happened. Plymouth has been fortunate, and we have a lot of that to thank these folks. But that doesn't mean the planning board can sit on their hands. So what are we going to do? Because I'm not going to stay at this meeting all night, if we're just going to talk about the last six months. It's a huge waste of everyone's time. You're volunteering your time, your time's valuable. So what do we do now, Mike? What do we do to move this forward? How do we work together? Because it's not going to go away. We have a master plan to implement. So suggestions, I'm asking. Or do you not want to work on it at all? You want us to stop talking about it?
They can go away.
If that's it, just, just say that.
I did.
I know how you feel, yeah. But you're a planning board member, and so...
In the petition that Kevin read, at the end, what does the last couple's statements say?
You're on the spot now, David.
Yeah. I'll read all of them, if sense, if you don't mind. "We are concerned that the arbitrary changes..."
No, not the, the last statement at the end of the petition, with everybody signed.
"Oh, we, the undersigned, also lend our support to the Plymouth Agricultural Zone Committee established in 2006, to voice collective concerns for those who live our own property in the Ag Zone."
What was the, wasn't there a sentence that...
All right, I think I'm just going to put a pause here, because I think, I think we're just, we're circling around the same thing, as Steve mentioned. It was helpful to hear that the first time. I don't think we need to hear, listen to it again. I think, I think it is time to move on. There is a, you know, I don't think this board is going to agree to say, we're not going to put any changes into the Ag Zone, because that is, that's really short-sighted. I mean, I just think of the changes that we've seen that have happened, you know, when we had a virtual reality slash Froyo thing go in, you know, we didn't have, that, it's been closed, it was at the, you know, the Newbury's building. But we didn't have a use in our table of uses for virtual reality. I think we went for indoor recreation. But, you know, I use this as an example, because we can't necessarily anticipate what we're going to see as a potential use, or a, something that's going to be coming in down the road, you know? I think about short-term rentals and things like that, that, who knew there'd be such a thing as Airbnb, you know, a decade ago, or more. So anyway, we have to be in a lot of raise, we have to be as proactive as we can, and that's what we're trying to do. And to put something into our master plan that says we're not going to change the Ag Zone, when the master plan makes suggestions about ways to improve our zoning ordinances that includes the agricultural zone, we just, we just can't, I just don't think we can do that. So I think we need to think about what we are going to do. June has brought up some administrative changes into our zoning ordinance that we need to focus on, and then some other potential permitted uses that we don't have, that we might need, or, I don't know, Junior?
I think you raised a good point, and I've said this to the board before. Currently, the ordinance does not allow more than six units per building for housing. New Hampshire's got a huge housing crisis. You've voiced about your experience with, you know, lots of requests for vacancies that you've had, Mike. You know, our next meeting, well, not the next meeting, but the next work session, I guess we call these, September 2nd, we're going to talk about housing. I think a change, this is the kind of thing I'm saying for the zoning ordinance, this community might want to consider allowing more than six units per building, perhaps by special exception, maybe not in any zone, but perhaps the agricultural zone might be a good place to do that. So there's changes that might come around, to say, just no changes at all, the Ag Zone isn't really addressing these types of needs that we have in our community, and finding places to have types of them. I don't know, I'm just tossing this out, it's just an idea, but yeah, we have to be ready to adapt. So I do think that the, the people here should think about, you know, what changes are acceptable for new types of uses? Is there anything that is willing, you know, because there's, there's uses that are happening that also aren't permitted, that we don't have the capacity to enforce, I can tell you that right now. So we have a new building inspector who's doing a fantastic job, and eventually, he's going to be moving ahead on some things. So we have to be cognizant that if it's not listed as a permitted use, then it's not allowed. That's the way zoning works. So, you know, do we want to allow more housing? Do we want to find ways to do that? What changes are constructive that people would accept? I think in keeping it at that is a better way as we work on things. So I just hope people are willing to consider things, and not just get caught in... So I just hope people are willing to consider things, and not just get caught in no changes at all, because I think eventually, too, once we start really enforcing the things, people are going to want some changes.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding, when is the master plan up for renewal? Or for changes? When is the 10-year mark up?
We did it in 20, I think it was approved in the 2018.
2018.
It usually takes a couple of years.
The next question I have is, when is the discussion of this topic, of change in the ag zone, going to happen? Is there a date set that you guys are looking forward to have it completed?
So, we should be talking about change to our zoning ordinance, I think is maybe a more complete way to talk about this. And we talk about this pretty much every work session, which is the first Thursday of every month. It does go to public hearing, when we have the final language for the, for any changes, for the, for any changes to our zoning. And that, it has to do with when town meeting is, and we count backwards, and it's usually early January. And we can have two public hearings that have to happen for a certain date.
I just want to be, like, informed. I wouldn't even know about this particular meeting at all, if I didn't get an email out there, or somebody else that's in this audience here.
So minutes and agenda are posted on the town's website, and they are posted in the town hall. Any notice, public, any meeting, any public hearing is put into the Laconia Daily Sun, a certain number of days beforehand, but we are here the first and third Thursdays of every month, so. And our job is not just to review applications.
Right, I'm just looking for this particular topic.
Yep. Frank, can you keep it quick?
Yes. Just on a discussion on housing.
Can we talk, we're doing a full housing discussion with special guest speakers on...
Just trying to give you the idea, there, when a person applies for housing here, it goes through the International Building Code Review, then it goes to their fire chief, and then it goes to, if it's a business, the Secretary of State. So each one of those has a different definition of the same house that you're going to try to approve, but you have to try to comply with all the various codes and standards. And that's where the confusion gets in, just a simple thing of the house. That's why it's called a technical infeasibility, when you go to court over the fact that someone's unhappy with the judgment, because they've applied for one thing, they've got a permit for another, and it gets reviewed by another agency. And unless you're on a, I'm on the National Fire Protection Codes and Standards Code Committee. And if you don't have all of those codes that line up on one single description, you have a technical infeasibility, you'll lose in court.
Thanks, Frank.
Yeah.
All right. So I think, I'd like to move on from the ag zone committee portion of the, of our agenda, unless anyone has any further discussion, any board members have any further discussion.
Do we have to close the motion, or not? Because it wasn't seconded.
Never seconded.
There was never a second.
Okay, so we just let it hang there. Okay. All right, so, next up, we have discussion about zoning ordinance, which includes the agricultural zone. So, are there, we're getting, we've been sort of talking about zoning changes, I mean, we always talk about zoning changes, but we've got our, it's August, so we've, we're, you know, we've got a certain, you know, maybe four more work sessions before we'd have to have some, any, if we're going to put any changes to the zoning forward, we only have a certain number of work sessions. So we need to kind of prioritize what we want to do as a board. I think June's got a list of priorities of just obvious discrepancies within the zone, within the ordinance itself. And then thinking about housing, and I think some clarity will be brought to us when we have, I can't remember, the Lakes Region Development, something?
Yeah, no, September 2nd, I can...
Someone who builds, who, a nonprofit that builds affordable homes in the Lakes Region, and then...
Lakes Region Community Developers?
Yes, thank you.
Lakes Region Community Developers, and George Regan from Lake, New Hampshire Housing, coming on the second.
Thank you, I couldn't get that straight. But we, so we will be adding, I think that will help shed some light on the discussion, but I think it is important to think about, you know, we do have a housing crisis in the state, and we're pretty limited by the size of, number of units that can go into Plymouth. That's something that we want to, should think about, if that's a, if that's a priority for us as a board. Any other glaring things, June, that you can think of, that we want to add to the, I mean, there's some definitions?
Yeah, I need to really buckle down and get, get something to you, maybe by the, in the next month, I will do my best to, or mid-September. I know that we had some interest in that committee, so maybe I can reach out first to them to, you know, Mike...
I'd be willing to come into the town hall and go over what you got.
Yeah, I've asked for some help with other definitions and some of these aspects, so I need to kind of try to come up that list of priorities, but, and then the housing piece, I think will also inform that, so maybe I'll try to work on some, some information around, like, within the zoning ordinance, about some of the housing issues that I see. But I keep saying this, the six units is one. Where could we create more opportunities for, you know, more units? How do we do that, to allow, you know, again, we can always have it by special exception, and then have a set of criteria that have to be carefully met. You know, is there enough space? Is there enough parking? Is, what's the location? Do we want to allow that in some zones and not? We could still keep the limit in other areas, but, you know, there's some history to this also. And we have some interest in some people, that even in existing buildings, that would like to add units. So it isn't necessarily about building a large apartment building, how do we create flexibility? Maybe we do it differently in an existing building versus a new building. I don't even know if that's legal, but we can find out, so, does that make sense? So if, I guess my message to you guys is, read the zoning ordinance and try to, I know it's not the most exciting thing, but, you know, to give me some feedback, too, would be helpful. And I did send you guys the link to the training, and one of you asked about, this is about zoning amendments, the process, so it's August 13th at noon, but they do record these, so you can watch them at any other time. So I'm going to try to attend, in case I have questions, we're going to, you know, you can live chat on it, but it will be available, so we'll make sure you get that link after it's recorded.
Any other priorities that folks are seeing within the zoning ordinance that we can highlight now, or...
I'd like to focus on cleaning up as many definitions and clarifications as we can, without, honestly, my thinking is, let's really focus on cleaning up any ambiguities, making sure we have adequate definitions for any terms that have been questioned in the past, you know, things like substantial development, you know, that came up recently, and we didn't have an adequate definition of what substantial development meant, or... So, my thinking is, I'd like to focus on just clarifying a lot of things, and tidying up what we have now. That should be fairly easy to put to the town and get approved, as we don't, I mean, it's only going to serve to...
Just as, since you mentioned it, by chance, found in the files, from some old case, I don't remember now what it was about, a memo from years back, from our town's attorney, about an issue about substantial development, and it was, and it basically, this was post, after the last planning board meeting, and his advice, basically, on whatever the issue was, was that it really is up to the planning board to decide substantial development. It's hard to define, sitting here and give that definition, because every development's different. It might be getting, you know, the parking lot and driveway in on this one, it might be building three out of six units in this one, you know, so you can't, the purpose of not having a definition, in some ways, is to allow the flexibility, development by development, but you need to see something, and when some, you know, just an intent to cut isn't, isn't substantial development, in my opinion. But it is up to the planning board to decide, so, every time it's different, so, we can somehow find a way to define that.
The only thing I'd add, June, and I was actually really encouraged at the last meeting that you mentioned, was just the continued effort to actually enforce the rules that are on the books. And you had mentioned a gentleman that started in the town, that's kind of taking that over and doing that, and I think that's, with all of this talk of different zoning, and so on and so forth, it's like, you know, remind him of my kids, right? If you have rules, but you don't enforce them, do you really have rules? Right? So I think a big part of everything we're talking about, and maybe if actually the current rules were fully enforced, maybe there would be some people saying, oh, actually, we do need to make some changes in some of these different zones, to make things work better. And I know that's a big task, but I think it's an important part of zoning in general, is just enforcing of those rules that are on the books already.
Anything else on zoning? Steve, you're like, right in my line of sight, so I keep giving the expectant look directly at you. All right. Are we good if we move on?
Mm-hmm. Please. Sorry. I didn't mean anything by that. I'm just looking forward to moving on.
So we get some unfinished and other business. Point of View Drive update?
Uh, yes. I have one, another handout here, you just take one and pass it on. I don't see anyone's here, I don't think so, not on Zoom. Maybe I didn't tell them. So this was a issue that I have raised before, about, we have a lot that it's, in the last few months, was sold up on Point of View Drive, which is at the top of the old Frontenac ski area, Frontenac subdivision that was done early 2000s. As I've mentioned before, the records of this subdivision are showing some changes in staff, that did not keep up with the good record-keeping, for whatever reason. So, I think this is partly a good lesson, too, for the planning board, in a certain degree. So, there was, the subdivision happened in three phases, so this lot, that really has raised this question, is about a lot from Phase 3, the top part, which is now known as Point of View Drive. What?
I couldn't read anything, I was using my phone to magnify it, because I don't have reading glasses, sorry.
Why, some reading glasses?
I have some, I didn't bring them.
Even with them, I still...
Your phone camera works really well, if you need it.
Anyway, so, what happened is that the top, we mentioned this before, the top of this road was supposed to have a cul-de-sac, it got built with a hammerhead. In the middle of this cul-de-sac, it looks like there's some plans, I can't tell which plans were the most final-approved ones, et cetera, et cetera, except that, so in the absence of our records, you go to the Registry of Deeds, that's what this picture is from, is a screenshot from the registry, because I can't print things on the registry. But that little shaded area is this drainage easement, which was supposed, an easement on the lot, which was supposed to capture water coming off the cul-de-sac into that area. The cul-de-sac's not there, the...
We have a guest.
The easement still exists, and so, when looking into this, you know, the question has come up, can the town extinguish the easement? The answer is no, because the town doesn't own the road. It's still privately owned by the developer. So, then the other question is, why is this a hammerhead and not a cul-de-sac? So there does appear to be a memo that was asked at some point, to have this change happen, but nobody seemed to have signed it, there's no record of the, it being signed. It was presented to the highway manager and fire chief, and I've checked with them, no record, and really, any changes to approved plan comes to the planning board, so even if they had signed it, it wouldn't have mattered, so, technically. It needs to get approved, you know, a plan come to the board, amended, adjusted, and then the board would hold a public hearing and make the, make the change. It doesn't appear that ever happened, the road's been built differently. It sounds like the owner of the road is not interested in giving us an as-built plan, or any sort of documentation, doesn't want, I've been told they don't want to spend the money on it. I'm still trying to follow up on that part, but I did find, the other thing is, do we have some kind of surety for this road still? Bond or letter of credit? And so I did finally find a file about, because, and also, Mike, you had indicated you thought it was still there, so, two hours today, at least, searching through this file, trying to sort out, literally, several files of a bond and a letter of credit for the different phases, trying to understand which goes with which, because they were all kind of mixed together. Got that together, did find that a letter of credit was issued in September 29, 2005, there were reductions to that over time, last one I saw, it had been reduced down to about $82,000. The bank that held it had been sold, Eastern Bank. So I called Eastern Bank, spent 20 minutes on lot, on hold, listening to music, and finally got somebody who had no clue what I was talking about, asking customer service, got another one, no clue. So I finally left a message for the Assistant Vice President, had signed the last letter we had. Of course, they wouldn't let me talk to them, I don't know why, but, somebody did finally call me back, at least recently, and so she's looking into it, to try to see if this letter of credit is valid, but the last thing in our files is from November 2014, and we had, seemed to have, if there's correspondence that came to the town after that, I have, it could have gone to the select board's file, I have no clue where it is. So I'm trying to get that from the bank, to see if by any chance, the town still has a financial way to call on this letter of credit, and create an as-built plan, some kind of engineered drawing, so at least we would have a record of this change up there, and then we could have documentation that shows that this easement isn't needed. Absence of that, I think it's just going to have to sit and wait for the owner to do something, and eventually, they'll probably want the town to take over the road, and that, and then it will come up then, because there will need to be an as-built, you know, inspection of the road at that time. It's the best I can do, so far, and I know, I guess the Marians are here on, can't see the way the camera's set up here, but, you know, they are proceeding, as I understand it, with building their house, and it, you know, I, there shouldn't be a need for this easement, because it wasn't built with the cul-de-sac. So I think, it's just something that's going to sit on paper, and it will bubble up again in the future, you know, unless we can get this letter of credit magically appears as still being valid, but I'm not hopeful about that.
So the, would the, would the goal of the letter of credit be to reconstruct the road as, to meet the plan that was approved? Or would we be looking for them to file a new, a subdivision, a new subdivision plan to, as an as-built, that would, it would, basically, it would be a new subdivision plan, because it would be boundary-aligned adjustments for each of those lots?
No, it's not, it's just removing that, it would just be a re, showing a change to that top part, showing the hammers, the T, and the cul-de-sac, and, but then by essence, then that there's no drainage there, that would need to be flowing onto their property.
I guess that's, my question is, would, does the T fit within to the area that is currently shown as a cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
So...
So yeah, you're right, there might be some reconfiguration, or, but I guessing the road, actually, the underlying ownership of that lollipop is still owned by the owner of the road, they just didn't pave it, you know, fitting that T within that, so...
That's my question.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't understand that.
But, so they could, they could remove the easement, if there's no needed, need for drainage, based on the road configuration, they could remove the easement, and it would be, is it a minor subdivision, at that point?
It'd be an amendment to the approved plan, but, again, the town's not a party to it, you know what I mean? We don't own the road, we don't own the lot, so it's got to be, it's a private matter, so, at this point, so we could not much we can do.
We could only hear it upon request of the owner.
Right. If we still have a letter of credit, we could request, call on that, to hire an engineering firm to do an as-built for up there. And maybe, at least then, we would have some documentation that we can put in the registry that we've discussed it, but again, the beneficiary of the easement is the owner of the road, not the town. So eventually, when this becomes a town road, it will come up, but until then, and I think it'll get sorted out then, but there's not really much we can do, we don't have any way to go back and force the owner of the road to do something, because the town let all this expire, is my guess, I don't know that for sure, but...
Does the town have the ability to refuse the road, if the road isn't built to the plan?
Sure, yeah, we wouldn't take it, yeah, so...
So there is, there is some recourse in that way.
We're in that process right now, in another road, we'll have the town's engineer, we just got money from holding it escrow, they're going to go out next week and look at it, make, you know, it's in better, you know, it's a good situation, maybe a final inspection, maybe correct a few items, and then provide a deed, and the town will take it over, so. We have a process for that, so. So anyway, I think, this is kind of more of a report back, I guess, at this point, I feel like I've put a lot of time into it with no resolution. Best I can do is hoping that we find something in this letter of credit, and I'll make some notes in the file, and leave it there, better organized, hopefully, for the... some notes in the file and leave it there, better organized, hopefully for the, the next time it comes up, is sort of a best, you know, best-case scenario, so. And I will keep trying to, I called the owner of the road, who I believe the attorney for that person, I just wanted to start there to, I had some indication from that, so, but I didn't get through, so I will, that's one, the one last piece I'll try, just to say, hey, we had this, send them a letter, maybe, some of the minutes. Okay? So it's more of an update for you guys on that.
I hate to put it back on the landowner, but would one, would one method of recourse for, for, be for the landowner to contact the developer directly, or would it be, would it be legal at that point?
My understanding, they have, and they thought they were going to be moving ahead on this, and then it kind of came to a stop, and then that's when they came to the town from their, my conversations with them. They are here online, but I think at the same time, again, I feel like I've put a lot of time into this and I kind of want to just give you an update and take it off the, you know, I, I'm sure they're not satisfied, you know, it's not the outcome you want, but it's the best I can do, and I think for the town at this point, so.
And it's sort of beyond what we can do as a board right now.
I can't bring you a plan to, you know, I could draw it out and, you know, so...
We see, I mean, you provided us what was recorded, which is the legal, I mean, that's, that's what was approved, that was what recorded, but it's not what was built, so.
I guess like, the only thing I would suggest is, when I push you guys at times on applications for having financial surety, and I think the other thing we need to work on is time to completion, you know, setting a deadline, and, you know, we, I believe our subdivision regulations say roughly like three years to build the road and get it done, and there's a reason for that, you know, because when you're going 15 years out and you can't figure it out in the files, it's just not, and then the road, you know, over time will change and deteriorate. We should be, that's why you have the bond or surety to use that as leverage to help get, get it finished, you know, or come back to the planning board and have a discussion with a new timeline. So there's understanding, so these kinds of changes don't get just kind of done on the back of a napkin or just done in the field with nobody watching, you know, so.
All right.
Not happy news, but...
New forms for subdivision and site plan review applications?
Yeah, I should have really combined B and C, I don't really have, I showed you the updated forms, applications, I haven't quite finalized them yet. I will add to them a statement somewhere, and this is one thing I want to put on there for the subdivision site plan, that, you know, beware that your approval is, according to the regulations, good for a year, whatever, you know, and putting that in on the checklist, so that's one that came up. For tonight, I just also wanted to mention about the fees for planning, planning board applications. Again, we've spent a fair bit of time on this, so this is the first public view of this, so it's a draft for discussion only. And the fees that we charge for subdivision site plan review applications, as well as a whole lot of other things, it's my understanding that those are adopted by the select board. So the top box here is a sort of a, we've been trying here in town hall to take a quick kind of look at, what time do we spend on a simple application? No, no application seems too simple, but I can pretty well justify at a bare minimum, you know, maybe those two lot subdivisions that we've had, a couple on Texas Hill Road are pretty straightforward, but you know, we have, we have to, we, we get the information, we make copies, we review the file, we set it up, we have to check the abutters, we have to send out the notices, do the public notices, copying, file cleanup, writing the staff report, attending the meeting, when there's time spent at the meeting, and writing up the minutes after. It adds up pretty quickly, you know, and notices of decision, you know, so I'm kind of saying eight hours per application is a ballpark, I mean, some will be less, some will be more, and so there's a cost to the town of that, and it pulls time away from working on the zoning ordinance, you know, that's our job, I'm not, I'm just trying to be a little bit more kind of analysis of how much that costs or how much time, time it costs. Currently, the fees here, the lines got, I took off on this unfortunately, subdivisions, we charge $100 a lot. Site plan review is $75 a unit, minimum $400 fee, so those are the, the ones that the planning board's most concerned with. We have a $5 per butter notice fee, and then there's fees that the Registry of Deeds charges for recording. So what I would like to propose, I'm still working on this a little bit, but I wanted to give you guys a look, that our application fee has a, for subdivision is a minimum of 500, and then we would charge up to three lots, $50 per lot, and then a major subdivision, which is more than three lots, and those are definitions that in our, in our, in our regulations, would be $100. And the reason for that is when there's frontage, I mean, excuse me, when there's a new road, if there's not, just using existing frontage. So anytime you're going to have a major subdivision where there's a new road, then we're having to engage, you know, our town engineer, getting an escrow agreement, getting the money, getting the engineering plan review going, and then, so there's another whole sort of cost of time and effort to that, so that's why I'm proposing that. But I also do feel we should set a maximum, because it can only go so high at some point. If you have a 50-lot subdivision, it could get, you know, it may not be that too burdensome at some point. And I mentioned this before, the site plan review, trying to change it to square foot disturbed, because again, that's more the trigger for the site work, not so much square footage of a building. Good case, Roma Joe's, you know, 900 square foot building, but, you know, even though it's a small site, the real impact from the planning board side in terms of review is the site, the drainage, the parking, you know, the circulation, traffic, engaging the engineer to review it, doing the construction inspection, so that, that was a place where that square footed building doesn't work from capturing the effort. So that's where, and again, trying to set a maximum, I have had some pushback, somebody saying, why set a maximum? Just let them make some money at it, but I do feel, you know, we, we, our goal is to not make money on it, it's to try to capture, and the statutes say, you know, capture our costs, basically. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, and then the cost of postage of certified mails going up, so.
I would assume that at some point you're going to have to present this to the select board for approval.
Yes, yeah, but I wanted to, before I do that, be able to say, I showed it to the planning board and had at least nodding heads.
If you, if you need, if you need support of the planning board, please let us know, I would be happy to attend, because these are costs that are currently being borne by all taxpayers, and by increasing the application fees, we are going to be applying the cost that the town, so the town is putting resources into this work, and it's currently being paid by tax, all taxpayers where it really could be assessed to the applicants, and I would support this.
We have also, I didn't put on here, looked at other surround, you know, other communities in New Hampshire, and they're all over the place. That's where some, a lot of communities have gone to the cost per square foot of area disturbed that I'm seeing, that where I actually got the idea, and having that kind of an approach. I mean, there's a point where, again, we're not trying to make money, but I think my goal is, what you just said, put the burden of, it's kind of like a toll on a toll road, you know?
It's a user fee.
Yeah. And will it deter development? I don't think so for anything major. I always say, if somebody's profit margin is so small that $200 more in fees or something is going to, or $500 is going to throw them over the edge, then we don't really want them developing, when they're going to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a development. You know, that five, extra $500 might not really be that big of a margin in their balance sheet, so.
June, did you...
In many cases, you know.
Did you say when, and if I missed it, I apologize, when these current fees were set?
I don't know that. I, actually, that's something I should probably look back at, I don't think they've changed in quite a long time, so, that's the other piece, I should look into that. I can just find an old file and...
Sounds like you have plenty of those.
Yeah.
All right. Any public comments? Okay, anything else from the board?
I move we adjourn.
That's quick.
Ten-minute meeting. All right, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.